All right, we're calling the Cleveland County Municipal Communications District to order. Go call Ms. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Beal?
Here.
Mr. Owen?
Here.
Ms. Andrews, y'all down there? All right, comments from citizens? Both citizens? Comments from board members? All right, approve the man?
Second.
Ms. Collins, first, and then the second. Y'all writing that down, right? I don't hear you writing that down. Okay. All right, have I read the vote?
Yes.
In favor?
Aye.
Uh, you men? All right. Reviewing Hethman Dispatch Contract.
Well, I think we're at on it. They didn't bring it up in the meeting, but, you know, we didn't really, and we listened to what they had to say. But it's like we told them that we have two different entities. One is 911 and one is our county commission. And, uh, but, you know, they did, they did present a number. The first number, we didn't like it at all, but then they come back. Uh, I think Shannon was more realistic and so, uh...
Is that something we talked about? Oh, maybe they're going to a different position or...
I don't know of any exception to those meetings. That would always come into the discussion.
Yeah. So, uh, so anyway, they, they went ahead and give us, give us a number because they want to get the ball rolling. They know everybody's budget is there. So, I don't know if there's any leeway going back, but I mean, I, we were sent there to talk about mostly the jail and, uh, and so that's what we talked about.
What's in the head, you know?
No, it's not that.
It was, uh, I think Lee and Jan and...
Oh, yeah. Ready?
Okay, does, I mean, is there anything we need to do with that?
Well, the thing is, is I guess if we want, I guess we probably need to say, we probably need to a resolution that the man, uh, look at the number and then man Laura go back and see what everybody says as far as what the number is. The number that they put out there, because I, we had to listen, so you want to hear the numbers, so we have to say the number that they said, right?
I mean, the dispatch amounts are already in the public record, that's it.
So, but I mean, I'm not in the negotiations of this. Where they were at, it was 60,000. Uh, we had, uh, and what I was trying to do was do the 15,000 on inmates and keep the dispatches where they're at. And, uh, Shannon sort of spoke up and, uh, you know, I mean, at the first, when it first got started, it sounded like it was much, gonna be much negotiation. So, I was happy to at least come back and almost double what we had. I think that we could go back and, uh, set...
Double it.
I mean, I think they only offered 36 for Starwood.
Yeah, they just threw that number out there and we talked with them, but we, you know, until, until we're, uh, the, uh, the commission size is sent us back to negotiate a solid, you know, something solid. We couldn't do it that night. The only thing that we did was the inmates, and that's $15,000.
And we listened, we li, and the thing about this, we, we, we listened. And so, I'm just saying, uh, one was just, you know, but, one, so we still have two people. So, they would have to vote whatever they, you know, we get through discussing. But it was a three-year deal on, you know, one had a three-year deal on table, one would just want to stick with a one-year deal. I'd rather, I'd rather lock it in, but at the end of the day, I guess we have to look at it, it's either, we're still got to send a call to whoever their number is, I guess. And I, as we were talking, I said, "Well, I just can't see, you know, to have somebody to take that call for that price." But I mean, at the end of the day, I think what we do is, 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 is voice our concern. So, that's when, uh, I looked at it this way, 60,000 is better than, uh... And, and, and then what I would say is, at the end of the day, because everybody's working in their, into their budgets, that we will just, uh, in my opinion, is, is, if this, we need to take what we can get because at the end of the day, we still got to take the damn calls, whether they, you know, however goes. So, I'd like to at least make sure that we can go back and maybe negotiate, try to get it up some. But, uh, because I really tell them, I said, "I really," I mean, that's what we told them, is we could, we would be glad to listen to what you got to say, so we'll know that we'll have something to work with here to take. And pretty much, you know, uh, what we're dealing with is strictly with the, with the council members. Uh, they're the ones who have it, so...
Right now, you correct me if I'm wrong. Right now, we got contracts sent to Rainburg, EMA, EMS, uh, and Hethman for the same amounts as they paid last year. Everybody's paying the same amount.
That's correct.
And that contract's due after Friday week.
Yes, all three of them.
Okay. And...
Well, I would say this.
Can we, can that be extended for 30 days?
I don't remember the terms of the contract, but I recall that has expiration date. You can vote a 30-day contract, but...
They have to accept it.
Yeah, I don't want to get that to the, I mean, time you go back and forth, that's gonna take two weeks.
Well, if you, if you were to take the 60,000 that they've already on the table or send us back to negotiate, not if this is decided to be reached.
Well, what is the contract rate percent?
76,000, 75,000, 75,500.
Right, 76.
I mean, me personally, I can't beat the 7% for that. That's not even two, that's not even two people's stuff.
I said that. I mean, I rock at it, at that point. I don't know what's gonna be there, not much of, no, no mind, but... But at the end of the day, you can't really look at everybody, because they're not counting entities. You know, like EMS, they sort of do fall a little bit under our entity. But at the end of the day, uh, when, uh, when we still on the contract before and the person I was talking to was right about, you know, paying it then, uh, I said, "Well, it's like this." So, I said, "I believe I, I said, 'You got EMS people now that is set up in Rainburg.' I said, 'They might come in and put a bid in on that, on those phone lines.'" And I said, "Then, I said, 'All the calls go to them, then they'll be negotiating with, they might pay the, the hospital award to rent the building that's sitting out there that is, is rent-free.'" You know, I'm just saying, you know, on that part, you know, I mean, you talked about that, that you can't, I mean, you, you sort of, you know, sometimes you get so deep into things, you cut, and you go ahead and cut your own head off because you get so deep into things. Because once I said, "Well, that," he pretty much tried to call on me and said, "I'll do a 10-year contract." And then I think he called you within two seconds after he called me, but, uh...
So, he would, he would do that, would you send us back to negotiate or not? One or the other?
Their contract provides, are we just getting the calls and sending them to them, or are we actually doing their dispatch?
We're doing their dispatch.
At the end of the day, if they don't agree for the amount that 911 is saving, then all that's gonna happen is to call them and report a new number for them, and they'll have to do their own dispatch. And that's on them. They're paying for a service, and that service is not one that this commission or the 911 district should need either. Arding Basin is negotiating. It is what it is across the county to every entity that receives the service. If they want the service, they can pay for it. If they don't, they can pay their own people to do it for themselves. Just send it to one number and they have to dispatch. See where the difficulty is there.
Uh, maybe you start talking to them.
I mean, we're putting out, we're putting people up, right, this, people up, and that, I'm not...
I don't think it's us, I think it's happening.
I'm, I'm just not willing to take that chance because we get so many calls out from our community and their leadership office, that's entirely true.
Well, you know, just like I've explained before, our, our setup is, has so many integral parts that are integrated by so many different agencies. We're not big, we're not a big accounting team or a city to manage calls by ourselves. And, you know, that's why I urge everybody to remember exactly what you're getting yourself into is that, you know, you pull away an agency, you pull away, you know, other resources, different resources that, you know, would still be there, yes, to help, but you're contacting another agency to coordinate that. And, you know, when I spoke to the city, I reminded them, even the weather that we had that came through a couple of days after I had a meeting with the city and said, "We had 40 calls on trees down. We had every, you know, everybody in the south end of the county out." I mean, if the city gets 25 calls with trees down and you have one person working that, I was sitting there with two dispatchers and one call out, and I'm glad there were four of us and we could barely keep out of the wraps. And, you know, we just don't want to disseminate and destroy everything we've got going. But on the other hand, is that when we calculate dispatching fees, I told our agencies, we calculate these off of call volume, and this is split equally and fairly among the paying agencies. And so, you know, I didn't worry about that, is that... Now that our agency is paying the...
You have this, and you do, but they keep, I mean, that one's unsatisfied.
And, you know...
It's, it's an issue for them.
It is an issue for them. And, and, you know, I, I get where they're coming from, but I do also see how it was calculated at $75,000, and that's an employee and a half for us. To manage our own center would be astronomically more expensive than that. And, you know, it is, and I told everybody that's called or asked about it, that we definitely do not need to disseminate and, you know, people start raking it off. So...
Well, I guess the options, options are, is either tell them to start their own center or vote to accept the money, the 60,000 on, on a three-year contract, or we'll go back and say, you know, 75. But I don't go back and say, you know, where we're spending a whole bunch of time going back to the files. So, I would either say, the commission has two options, either this is what, and then, and this here, it's like they said, you know, even what they've said, there's only two of them sitting there. I mean, we were just sitting there, we really wasn't talking about 911. They're the ones who, they thought we was there to talk, and I was trying to explain to them there's a 911 board and then there's a commission board. We're here as the jail board. So, and then, uh...
If I, if I would have counted anything, I would go back to them and, and say that, you know, we have to have this dispatching fees, and if it's a three-year contract, however we write it out, this is just me, in my opinion, but it has to be the same for all paying entities. That would just be my thing, is that, you know, if not, you're gonna have other entities, you know, very, very upset, which, I mean, you're, you know...
I can understand them being upset before it all falls back down. The other entities weren't involved in the one cent sales tax. That's, that's where it's all, where everything is coming from. It's something that was, nobody showed you use it.
But it wasn't good between the commission, the commission didn't have anything to do with the one cent sales tax.
I agree, but it's not.
That was just a meeting of the minds and, okay, what we gotta do? It's either you already sent the contract for 75, whatever. So, they got that in their hands. If y'all want to amend that contract and go back to something different, then we need a motion. Or if y'all want to go back and talk to them and need your money.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we'll go back and talk to them at least, and then...
We can get back to them because we couldn't really talk about it really that night because we want three or two to talk about it.
And, you know, I told, I told the council too, I would be happy to go to one of their meetings and explain anything, any questions they had, show them how it's calculated, show them our budget. You know, all, I would be happy to do that if...
I would say, I would, I think, I think the mayor explained it pretty good to them. I mean, I, I, I think the mayor is an advocate for it. But it, it's no different than, you know, at a commission, you know, that the council members is the ones that are, you know...
And one of the council members was in the meetings that, uh, the negotiation took place.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's kind of hard to... You know, it doesn't matter if it's written on a piece of paper, and you give the word, that should be there. And, you know, and I'm sorry, it's dropping on. The word is as good as, uh, written on a paper, I think.
The commission didn't give the word on anything. The commission was not in session when that meeting took place. So, the commission did not commit to anything. So, members of the commission committed, but not the commission as a whole. I hadn't seen any paperwork for it, except...
But it's like everything else that we've seen in the past, and you know it as well as I do, Terry. A lot of times, they wasn't paper trails, it was just a handshake, this is what we're gonna do it, and they went on. I mean, it, it's very obvious, and I've only been looking at it in the last, what, three months? And it's very obvious there was a deal made there.
Well, there are some resolutions that, that reflect some of the things that was discussed.
But not one cent sales tax. I hadn't seen a resolution saying, "No, not one cent sales tax."
Well, all I'm saying is, let's just say that at no time would you, that I would, you know, the first time it was presented to me, it was voted, it was voted in front of me. And it was said, "That's what your city has in place for inmates." Well, I didn't know about the one cent sales tax. I didn't know about any agreements of running the library or, or the juvenile delinquents or, uh, dispatching fees. I didn't know all that. So, all I was looking at is, I said, "I cannot believe that..." I said, "Well, I said, what I said was, I said, 'When was this done?' 'In the 1800s.'" That's what I said to the administrator that was here then. And I said, "Well, gosh," I said, "They only paid him that," and I said, "I think you ought to, you know, bump it up." So, that's how it was presented to me, and that there was administrator that was here through all the sessions. I didn't know that there was a, a, a resolution that said, you know, anything. But at the end of the, at the end of the day, I mean, we can say and argue about it all night, whether it was, you know, keeping the word, the honor of the word. To me, they're coming to the table more than what that agreement was. But I just think, I think one thing is, is, is on the, on the sheriff's sees, probably we'd be talking about this, and then, you know, it seemed like it was a big issue and a lot of money on that, and then come to find out, it ain't nothing but peanuts compared to what we're dealing with now. And we done back our shit into a hole with comments and, and hard feelings, you know? And then, then when you talk about the apology, and then you take the apology back in front of everybody here sitting here, you know, in the last meeting, it's all sad.
Can you write us a resolution that's allow us to...
I just had here, Commissioner Owen made a motion to continue discussing numbers with the city of Ethel. It didn't have fever.
He's first, and you're the second. Okay, everybody in favor?
Aye. Well, I want to stay with this because we're close to our, we gotta get this over the finish line. Can we, before we leave our day, let's continue this meeting for Tuesday. Is that good? Can we do that?
You can do that.
Okay. But I want to go...
You're running down on the mother's, you know...
It don't matter, we're not going to make with the, with their meetings. I'll, I'll run the, and Shannon, and we'll just go back down there and listen to them, shoot them.
All right, let's move on. I'll take the course with you, because I might have to...
Okay, let's move on. Reports of staff.
Okay, so you see the, uh, Matt Cleveland Commission report, and obviously you guys know August was heat-related and severe storms, all that long. And we issued 14 new addresses. We had another volunteer fire department come up for a site visit in our center. We spent some time with them. And we're still waiting in here for, for the, um, the state grant cycle eight. I'm expecting it this week, so I have my fingers crossed. We applied again for the radio system, $226,000 on it. I applied for the upgraded recorder, which is $25,000, and then I applied for a backup center, um, and I believe it was $6,000 or $8,000. So, hopefully we'll get one of those grants. Trying to think if there's anything else major that we did. I don't think so, I think that's maybe on that.
Okay.
Was there anything else that we could have...
We did. Um, that grant is 4503, and, um, I had the state EMA, our state regional EMA representative come up last week for a visit with me, and that is still EMA. So, she checked into that and said, "The EMA has not made a decision on it yet." That was, that's still out, she was...
Any more questions? Mr. Collins, you ready?
I don't have any report, however, I would just state that in the discussions that are going to the city of Ethel, we need to remember and very specifically delineate between the dispatch contract and the jail issue. Because whatever they believe or whatever argument there is regarding jail and one cent, et cetera, none of that has anything to do with the 911. And that needs to be completely separate and distinct. They're two separate entities. Y'all sit as the commissioners of the 911 district, but it is a separate entity, and they should not be conflated together. That's just my advice on that.
And we'll explain that to them that night, but we want to add a little more there to discuss.
Any questions? Any questions for Jessi?
So, yeah, who are you? Okay, I just want to make sure we done the journey thing.
All right, no old business, you know?
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion, board members.
Uh, the equipment outside, I see that they took the, did they go fit, uh, the battery was dead on the generator. Did they go put a new battery on, or somebody already?
Um, Mr. Beal and Laura, who were the rodeo?
Okay. The battery was for a week on it. I checked the oil and everything in it the other day, and I, usually I've been franking it, but I haven't franked it in a while. Jesse was good about franking it.
I think Fred, yeah, he, he did something with it once or a while ago, so, yeah, Mr. Beal.
Well, this was just like, this was the first part of this week.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't, but the other equipment that's out here, I'd like to, instead of them, that, especially like that trailer, is there's not an entity that can put that to use, I mean, that would, I mean, you know, it's like, it's like that, uh, that whale retriever models in there.
We have let all of our agencies come and get whatever they wanted, so at this point, it's just, you know, sitting there. I mean, we're not a, um, we're not using it. A lot, I know a lot of the, one of the, the, the things in the, um, cover trailer in the back half and all this, a lot of old medical stuff.
Yeah, most of it just needs to be cleaned out. I took one of the trash bins and put it on the back deck. I mean, there are trash bins and stuff like that, but, but I'm just saying, like, uh, I'd just hate to see it just sat out there and just go to waste, you know? Even though it sits there for so long, you know, but they start building the rafts, eat the wires off the truck and everything else. So, uh, I don't know if you'd want to take and, and auction it all off and take that money and use it for your, for whatever you use it for. I'd love to see you do that, if you see it sat out there in preparation. And it give us another parking place, and we won't have to dodge it out there. I mean, that trailer out there, that, uh, the trailer was a heavy-duty trailer. I mean, it was hauling weight, uh, you know, even say that, uh, our engineer would want to say, "I will give you X, Y, Z for it." I think he could put it to use. I know he's still looking for a truck to, or a tow truck, any.
Good argument.
Okay, I thought he was looking for something. I know, I know the city of Ethel was looking, was, was one of the top three to buy it, so they would be willing to give you some weight there. I don't know if they'd have bought something, they aren't mine, but, but it's not, you know, put, you know, oxygen. I think you'd be better to auction it off than just sit out there and go with it. But I think, I think, I think probably you'd be surprised what you get for that box truck. I like when you can franken it, drive it down the road, and try to get the flat places out of the tire. But empty it like a truck out.
I thought, you're talking about this, I thought trucks and our hour, only the box, you know? Then the rescue, don't say that if anything ever happened to the truck, they want it back.
And...
Why don't we do this? Why don't you give us some information and give us a list of what you got? And let's talk about it next morning.
Well, we can just make following up in a week.
Can we, can we continue to make more than one circuit?
You can, as long as there's specifically a line.
Is that on my board? I just want to get the type of area, you know, get it cleaned out.
Yeah, I'll do that.
You want to connect? Okay, well, anybody else?
You said the fire department's already listed through all of it.
Yes, sir, yeah. And by then, they must have agreed with, and, um, EMS to get what they need out of it.
Did any of them show any interest in the fireworks stuff?
You know, honestly, it's been so long.
Yeah, okay.
It's been so long. I don't think any of them did. I know not the box truck.
And all I'm saying, I think it's good enough equipment that, you know, they can, you know, they can keep it running, keep it going, and if you need it, or we need it, or anybody needs it, you know how the fire department is, they want to be, "Okay, we'll break it to you, then do the running." Right now, sitting out there, I don't know if it would run or not. But, uh, but I, I think, I think, I think, I, I just, I'd rather, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily say you wanted that, sell it to them, but I'd rather really see it being used in one of the districts or, you know, one of the county entities.
Right, okay, I'll give that information.
All right, any other? Anything else? If you want to ask for a motion to continue this meeting till Tuesday at what time?
3 o'clock?
2:30 in tomorrow, eventually Tuesday, 26.
Yes, sir.
Okay, count off, what'd you say? 3 o'clock?
3 o'clock.
And it's two subjects matters are surplus equipment and dispatching fees.
Anything you want to put on surplus, uh, Chris.
All right, I have a motion.
Yes, sir. I have a motion.
Okay, you say it, I'll run it.
Yes.
Okay, everybody in favor? All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll go back into the commission. Okay, so welcome everybody to the commission meeting for this month. We're gonna start by calling Rowan. Ms. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Beal?
Here.
Mr. Owen?
Here.
And I'm Terry Andrews, I'm here. Let's pledge allegiance to the implications of Madison waters, say a prayer, and then lead us to the...
Pledge allegiance to the well of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us, and we thank you for life and all your many blessings, but most of all, Lord, for your sacrifice. We want to remain in this night, Lord, pray that anything that's accomplished here will be to your glory. In Christ's name I pray, amen.
Have you guys asleep? Sit down, chair.
I must be this long.
You got something on your shoulder?
I'm just informed, and I think that's something y'all are already looking at, right? Yeah, we're...
I think I did an initial thought a few weeks ago, and I talked to y'all about the K9. I said, "This is a port card, port card number that Lisa got with Emily that would be covering the overtime, which included the retirement, the FIC benefits, and workers' comp, and that total will come up $5,447.34." I just asked him if that, being able to do it possible. And then, so we'll make sure I carry over, we're there for last year, and then the money for the title that was supposed to be added also, pretty much in there.
So, you got the title, right?
Yes, sir.
You got that, Lisa?
And that's already in the budget?
$5,000 is already added to overtime budget.
That's why I didn't know if it was added to it or not, but...
After we discussed last time, as long as the resolution passes tonight to allow for that overtime expenditure, it has already been added.
So, what about the, how much is this carryover number this year?
Um, it's too early to say for now, yeah, we have to work with them. Really, um, we want to do really good, this carryover probably until December, because it must be on a corral basis, we will continue to receive invoices a lot of times all the way up to November, and sometimes even early December for items that are from FY twenty-three.
Okay.
That's all right.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'm ready.
You saw the resolution we got coming out of that?
I have seen the resolution, but I appreciate it, but, um, I, I don't know if y'all know where we are in collections, but we're, we're about to roll out the bills at the end of the month, and it, it appears that we're going to be collecting about six point nine million, um, in property taxes this time, which is about two and a half million more than the first year I was on board, so we, we are progressing in progress.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
All right, so, get up, please. You guys can leave. Awarded presentation, you know, any kind of scheduled public hearing. We got one for a C D, C D, B G, seven, last time.
All right, I have to come up. So, I'm Eric, from the Eastside Regional Planning Development Commission, I'm our planning development director, this is a grant we wrote with the, uh, Cleveland Water Authority, um, and this is an amendment to this ongoing project over the money left over, uh, as part of this, uh, project, uh, testing to their great work, and they came in under budget, so this is amendment to allow, uh, for those remaining funds to be spent to hook up an additional, maybe five, five different homes there. So this is the public hearing to, uh, to receive any commentary or comments on that.
We're required to have a public hearing. We're twenty, forty, fifty thousand dollars with, which is very limited, how much you can do with forty, fifty thousand dollars. We miss the County Road Thirty-One, north up sixty-five, that's five or six houses, I forget exactly, that are interested in getting water to qualify, and survey them, and the surveys pass the qualification. But this is a public meeting, to have this amendment, that we're required to have.
Anybody here, anything to say? Would you, guys?
Another call?
I don't think you need a motion, it just took a, a, a public hearing to, uh, receive, uh, any input or comments.
I would appreciate the work, I believe, and saving this money, save this one.
All right, thank you.
All right, contend agenda. First and second, then signed off with the third. We'll move to that, the new business, uh, case. All right, so, I have a motion on the contention.
I have a motion with the Senate General.
Ms. Collins, second. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
The man is. All right, we live on the new business. Don't need to add these licenses now, not even now, or if something were to come. It doesn't matter, you can add them at any point. Okay, we, um, we got four licenses that we need to add, if y'all want to add. First one is, whereas the responsibility of Cleveland County Commission to pass a year of budget for the upcoming fiscal year in September meeting, therefore, after review and deliberation, Cleveland County Commission, we're required to adopt the tax fiscal twenty twenty-four budget version blank. I mean, we're going to go over the budget at the end of the meeting, and I'm sure we'll probably continue to meet, but we need this to be able to do all that. Got a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, the motion, the motion is to add, now, not, not the vote on the motion.
Motion.
Okay, aye, rye, in favor? Now, let's add it. We're going to make this one aye. May run out of the house, please. Okay, the next resolution that we're asking to be added, whereas the county, Cleveland County Sheriff is interested in purchase of the K nine deputy for my product detection, therefore, the Department of Labor requires that law enforcement agents should compensate the K nine handler for thirty minutes of overtime for the care of K nine. Therefore, the sheriff has stated that purchase of the K nine and all of the related expenses will be paid by the sheriff from the sheriff's truck fund, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to fund the overtime portion of the K nine expense, uh, addition to the corporate budget plan.
How much of the motion we add?
Seven. Okay, motion and a second. Everybody vote.
Aye.
Okay. Let's make this one aye. Can I skip one?
Keep doing good, there.
Let's see if we get done on that. I don't think this one happened. Okay, the third one we got there is, ACC has a position on it. It's about cybersecurity grant. Whereas the state and local cybersecurity grant program allows the Department of Homeland Security to make cybersecurity investments in local government, therefore, whereas Alabama Office of Information and Technology and the Cybersecurity Committee has developed a cybersecurity plan for the utilization of these grant funds. Whereas the Association of County Commissions of Alabama has completed survey, and we have to member counties, the state, O I T, and the committee to determine what's the needs. Whereas county must complete the document to be eligible for this grant, including the S L C G P interest survey and the S L C G P local consent agreement, therefore, Cleveland County Commission resolves to authorize the sheriff and Ryan Robinson to execute these documents on behalf of the commission. I'll ask for, so, ask for a motion to aye.
I ask you.
Okay, here's your first, just a second. Okay, everybody in favor, add the motion? Okay, let's make this one aye. All right, one more. Whereas representative from Southern Farmhouse Company presented a possible project for Cleveland County, whereas purpose of the project is to honor deceased individuals who have served honorably in one of the branches of armed services of the United States of America. Whereas the design and placement of markers, which will be placed along the roads and streets of the town of Ann Arbor, will explain. Whereas S F C will be responsible for the construction and placement of maintenance of these markers and the collection of D N Ps associated. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission supports Southern Farmhouse Company in their pursuit, in their pursuit of the project known as the Veterans Memorial Marker Project.
Another motion to aye.
Everybody in favor? Now, this, uh, this is going to be aye. Go back to item A, and our new business creates a new job description for Reddy Commission Department. Whereas the committee commissioners request an additional job title with description being added to the county list of jobs, whereas a position will be titled appraisal assistant slash collection clerk, and will have a pay grade of eleven. Whereas the commission has been presented a job description for the new position, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to the addition of a new job description.
Everybody?
Yes, the copy of the new job. All right, ask for a motion. Just a second. Everybody in favor of adding, adding the description?
We have asked it to be added.
I mean, I didn't, even if we had a job, I'm just, all right, everybody in favor? All right, they've announced the B for new business. Whereas the committee commissioners request a change in their department's organizational chart, whereas the request will add a position titled appraisal assistant slash collection clerk to the Reddy Commission property appraisal and mapping departments, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow the change in Reddy Commissioner's department organizational chart.
My question. Seven.
All right, everybody in favor?
Aye.
She man. Moving on to item C. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission has been contacted by the Alabama Retirement State Employees Association, the Alabama Employee Habitant League concerning an option to provide a one-time bonus for retired county employees. Whereas Act Two of Three dash one oh seven was recently passed by Lexington, signed into law, together with the ID to authorize this. Whereas information from A R S D A slash A P E A L reports that the total number of retired Cleveland County employees that will benefit from the bonus is thirty-one, with the estimated cost of the Cleveland County Commission being fourteen thousand and ninety-four dollars. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to provide funds necessary to the employee's retirement system to cover the costs of the lump sum payment that's provided in the act not to exceed the aforementioned amount.
That's right. Law.
Make sure you get all this out. Okay, everybody in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then this one, three, so this is.
She's drinking water, I'll just say thank y'all for the hand, all the retirees.
New business, item D. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission previously agreed to earmark two hundred thousand dollars in funds, in addition to the general fund for the building of animal shelter. Whereas the project is set to begin, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow funds to be paid out for the building of the animal shelter.
Sir.
Any discussion?
All right, so this here's earmarking the money to be paid?
Since to be paid out.
Okay.
I'd like to ask the attorney to put this two cents for a county.
I'm just curious, we had discussed in a previous meeting that there's going to be a contract with the city that would identify all the commission harness as these funds are expended?
I have a resolution that I put together that not yet. Anyone here?
My concern, even with this, uh, because the discussion was, since the city of Heflin's going to be running it, that they were going to identify all the commission harness.
Well, all we're doing is earmarking two hundred thousand, we're not, we're not involved in animal shelter, so however they run or do the animal shelter, they will be the ones that will be held or whatever, but what they're going to do in this two and a five oh one six contract with the animal shelter, no, they're going to be the ones that set up and ran it.
And I don't disagree, and I understand that that's been the final law, but, but there's nothing where the city has signed saying the commission is going to be totally harmless and identified. If the city, and I'm not saying they were, but let's just, for the sake of argument, if the city were to violate the Department of Labor's law in some way in building destruction, the county could be liable, if anyone was voted on spending money to support it, could be criminally liable, but that's all of course. I, I have to point that out to the commission, that unless we have something in place to protect the commission and the individual commissioners, you could be opening yourselves up to criminal liability if we don't have that in place.
I will, uh.
I have no problem working with the city's attorney, hopefully, but we don't have anything in place, and that, that's what concerns me on behalf of the commission and individual commission.
Because they're not, they're not looking at being, you know, we, we're, at first we started in, but they, the site, we've got the site cleared and everything already, but, but we will, I will get with the city of Heflin about, and, and we'll get, uh.
Just have that.
Oh, it's, oh.
Well, the money is already to the earmark, and you all extended that earmark at the last meeting. This resolution is on the table right now, this is start paying out money, and my concern is paying it out without that contract in place. So, if, if the goal is still to get that contract, I would recommend we table this until that contract is in place.
Because Emmettson, you know, he's the one that's out there working with on, on a daily basis, so, um, the building and everything is getting close.
Well, I think this meeting's going to be continued, so this meeting, I think this meeting today is going to be continued, just to find budget, I think we're going through the budget today.
So we can say this to, to, well, continue.
And then we'll get Patrick, we can get the budget.
Clear that.
Okay, we'll table until our, uh.
So you have a motion to table, a motion or a.
May I ask a question? If, when you table this and discuss it a little further, will you give me a little guidance on policies to be paid out, invoices turned in, or that type of thing, so I'll know how that's to be paid out?
In fact, we were beginning, that's how we say it, it was, it's invoices. Okay. I mean, you know, in the beginning, we talked about it, that we pay out invoices, you know?
I just want to make sure that what we have in the form of resolution, is we will support how we're paying it out, because the county will look at it.
And, and, I'm not trying to be a problem, I'm trying to protect you, that's, that's.
And I'm sure Patrick, you know, between you and Patrick, I can help, uh.
Sure, sir.
Okay, Emmett's got a motion to table, second?
Second, sure.
Okay, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to item D. Whereas the county commission policy regarding the employee health insurance allows for the insurance start date, meaning first day of employment, whereas the commission would like to delay that start date by up to thirty days, whereas the local government health insurance board only allows for the delay to last until the first day of the succeeding month after employment, whereas the change in policy for the L G H I V can be officially quest, requested in November twenty twenty-three to be effective starting January one, twenty twenty-four. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves to change this employee healthcare policy and allow for the delay of employee health insurance coverage starting when employees hire in January twenty twenty-four.
How much motion?
Second.
Okay, everybody in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to F. The coroner, I mean, Donnie asked him if he wants to speak before his business?
You can, I mean, he could have spoken under officials or board members, or once there's a motion on the table, if you want him to speak, you can.
Okay, uh, item M. Whereas the coroner of Cleveland County has asked that he appoint Sawyer Downs as deputy coroner, whereas the county attorney has provided information to the commission to link this Ernstwood.
I'm with you.
Okay. Relation of the coroner to the coroner, so long as the commission has approved overriding such appointment, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to the appointment of Sawyer Downs as deputy coroner.
How much motion?
You got anything to say, they have the time, dude. He's trying to jump on you there.
I know.
All right, everybody in favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor. All right, moving on to item G. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission previously passed resolution one oh six eight to allow for the purchase of Ford Bronco for nine oh one, a big hit. Whereas the vehicle has been available, therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to rescind resolution one zero six eight.
How much of us are rescinding resolutions?
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Item H. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission has received local assistance and tribal contingency funds, whereas a portion of these funds have been used. Can you do, is that right? Have been used, we've already used another?
Yes, S R O B Nichols, so that equipment.
For the county services with a remaining balance of two hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-sixty. For the county services with a remaining balance of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to write this fund equally between the four districts at sixty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents per each district to be approved by IAC and the commission before the expenditure.
How much motion?
Sir.
Everybody in favor?
Ah.
Motion back this way. All right, so moving to I. Whereas the town chairman has received a grant from the Alamo Department of Transportation for two hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars for improvements to the Frank Lloyd Wright Memorial Drive. Whereas the awarded grant must be expanded for the construction purposes only. And can be done, and can be done for existing annual bills that are replaced by Cleveland Commission. That sound right, right? Whereas Alamo is agreeable to the town entering a corporate agreement with the Cleveland County Commission performing work. Whereas the town chairman has resolved to pay the Cleveland County Commission based on detailed purchase orders submitted to the town chairman for work performed on this project. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow county engineers to perform this work for the town chairman.
How much motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
All right, now to J.
You'll read all of it?
No.
Lower the voice.
Do we have to read all of it?
It's silent.
I mean, it's the same thing that would be for the board, though, for the board.
You have a motion to read by title alone.
Read by title, how much motion?
But you have to have a public hearing for that.
Really?
You have to open and close a public hearing.
How about we read fourth?
Okay. Resolution and grant to participate in the joint bidding program for asphalt. Whereas the Alamo legislature enacted Act Number Two Thousand One Fifty-three during the two thousand area session, which act authorizes two or more counties and states enter into agreements of the joint bidding perks survived required to be bid under Alamo's competitive bid law developed in nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one sixteen dash fifty at sec. And whereas the Randolph County Commission has agreed to administer a joint bidding program for Randolph and Cleveland counties for the joint bidding of liquid asphalt as required under Alamo's competitive bid law. And whereas pursuant to code of all in nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one dash sixteen fifty, each county desiring to participate in the joint bidding program is required to adopt a similar resolution satisfying its desire to participate, and it's agreed to the terms and conditions of participation. And whereas the Randolph and Cleveland County Commissions desire to join and participate in this joint bidding program for liquid asphalt and understand and agree to the procedures as set out below, that the Randolph County Commission shall provide administrative services to the program. And in this regard, shall oversee the development of written specifications for each item to be bid, provide notice by mail to respective bidders for each item to be jointly bid according to the law. Open bids pursuant to bid specification at its office at twelve East Broad Street, Southeast of the Delaware Alabama, and provide other services if necessary. That in order to participate, the Cleveland County Commission shall forward to the Randolph County Commission the names and addresses of each person or company who has submitted a written request to be included in solicitations of bids for a particular item, its vendor list. And that following the receipt of said vendor list, the Randolph County Commission shall mail appropriate bid specifications to each particular person or company if that particular item is being bid, as provided in code of all in nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one dash sixteen dash fifty-four. That in compliance with code of all in nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one dash sixteen dash fifty-four, the Cleveland County Commission shall not be eligible for purchase of items under the contract awarded through the program unless it is provided the Randolph County Commission with its vendor list for liquid asphalt, if such a list is held on account. That the Randolph County Commission will provide, including the Cleveland County Commission, with a notice of solicitation for bids. And in compliance with code of all in nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one dash sixteen dash fifty-four, each county commission shall post said notice on a bulletin board in the county's purchasing office or courthouse. That in compliance with code of all in nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one dash sixteen dash fifty-four, each county agrees that it shall not be eligible for purchase of items under the contract awarded through this program unless it is processed as a notice. The following the open of bids, the Randolph County Commission shall serve as the awarding authority for the program and shall return the lowest responsible bidder and awarded contract bid through the program at regular meeting of the Randolph County Commission as announced at the opening of bids. That participation in the county joint bidding program is strictly voluntary and that subject to the conditions set out in paragraphs two, three, four, and five. Once the contract has been awarded through the program, the Randolph County Commission and Cleveland County Commission may purchase liquid asphalt during the contract period under the terms of, not the price established under the contract, but shall not be required to purchase under the contract and awarded through this program. That by the county deciding to purchase an item other than through the program, it must separately bid out if such bidding is required by Alamo's competitive bid law. The following the award of contract under this joint bid program, purchasers of liquid asphalt through the program by the Randolph County Commission shall be made directly from the successful bidder of the county pursuant to its own purchasing policy. And that the Randolph County engineer, Justin Rush, shall serve as the joint purchasing agent of this program. The following the award of this contract under this joint bid program, purchases of liquid asphalt through this program by the Cleveland County Commission shall be made directly from the Randolph County Commission by the following process. All liquid asphalt shall be picked up at the Randolph County Highway Department located at eight Seventeen Golden Avenue Northwest in Alabama. And late thirty minutes notice shall be given to the Randolph County engineer for pickup to insurance employees available for dispensing of materials. The Randolph County Highway Department shall be in charge of billing slash invoicing to the Cleveland County Commission on a weekly basis. All billing shall be calculated by multiplying the awarded contract bid price by the amount of liquid asphalt dispensed. The amount of liquid asphalt dispensed shall be calculated by some passing of a truckload, the gauge located on Randolph County's car tank, the gauge located on Cleveland County's car truck. All invoices will be mailed via USPS to the Cleveland County Commission at P O Box Nine Oh Eight Heflin, Alabama, three six two six four. All invoices shall also be emailed to Lisa Copeland at alcopeland@cleveland.us and Travis Hurd at herd@randolphcountyalabama.gov. All invoice payments shall be considered due upon receipt. And late after thirty days, late payments may be assessed at five percent late fee. All payments should be made via check, clearly listing the invoice to pay, and mailed to the Randolph County Commission at P O Box Two Two Eight, Red Valley, Alabama, three six two seven eight. That the Randolph and Cleveland County Commission shall remain a member of this program so long as they desire and agree to participate in this joint bidding agreement under its terms and conditions. And that either commission desiring to terminate participation shall be at least thirty days' notice of this intent to terminate. That at the expiration of the thirty days termination notice, the joint bidding program shall cease to exist. And neither county shall be eligible to make purchase of, under the terms nor the cost of the contract awarded through this program. The following termination of this joint bidding program, each county will be required to bid liquid asphalt on its own under the requirements of Alamo's competitive bid law. And this resolution, once adopted by each county commission, shall serve as a disagreement and contract with this bidding county for the joint bidding of liquid asphalt required to bid under Alamo's competitive bid law. That in order for a county to purchase an item through this joint bidding program, it must have joined the program by adopting this resolution prior to the solicitation of bids for liquid asphalt. That if once the county has joined the program, shall man number, and subject to the conditions set out in paragraphs two, three, four, and five above, shall be eligible for the purchase of all items that are after bid under the program until and unless it terminates this participation as set out in paragraphs eleven, twelve, and thirteen above. Be it resolved by the Cleveland County Commission with agrees to all terms and conditions of the county joint bidding program as set out above and desires participating in said program. Be it further resolved that it is the intent of the Cleveland County Commission by adoption of this resolution to enter into a joint bidding agreement with the Randolph County Commission. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be immediately forwarded to the Cleveland County Commission with a request from them to join us in the joint bidding bidding venture until the program is terminated under the procedures set out in paragraphs eleven, twelve, and thirteen above.
Sir.
All right, everybody in favor? Or you can discuss.
I just want to make sure on the.
You can read again, so it's too many.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Uh, just want to make sure we know, how much of this are you going to be getting as far as we're really.
So the most, the reason for this overview is that facts, right?
Right.
Uh, so we're in the middle of thinking, we were probably going through six hundred gallons of it.
I just want to make sure that, that our ministerator and Krista knows that when you start doing these things, that we got to get that process out, someone gets stuck with a five percent late fee, right?
Okay, my question is, we're only paying for what we use, if they overorder, we don't respond for any of that.
It's what goes in the dial of our truck.
Okay. And that's what I would say, just to make sure. Okay. Motion back. How about?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Ah. We move back to the, to some. There's only one on the table, right?
Whereas the woman, number three, which I don't know what she wants to do. Whereas the maintenance worker position currently reports to the commissioner of District T. Whereas the commissioner for District T would like to have that duty report to the commissioner for District Four. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow for the transfer of the maintenance worker position to report directly to the commissioner of District Four.
How much motion?
All in favor?
All in. Discussion.
Okay.
You like Colton again?
No.
Yes, I'm saying.
Uh, I would like to have that position answer directly to our ministerator, Lisa Colton. I would like to change it to position four, where it would be, uh, who'd be, the person would be answering to Lisa Colton, our ministerator. Who's second?
Lisa.
Well, Emmetson. You good for that? Is that better?
It is, we've had this discussion before. Anytime an employee answers directly to a commissioner, it sets that employee apart and distinct from other employees. It's better.
Well, that's direct to a group.
This, well, and this body is the legislative body. Uh, Lisa Colton is your executive, so it's. The safest and best.
While we're, while we're doing this, it's going to be, we, uh, also the cleaning person that we're fixing to have, and it might be that we need to add this later when we hire the person. But right now, I think, and we also, we're going to have a new cleaning person that we take on that's going to answer to Krista Patton with E L A.
What's that position?
Okay, okay, so that's the way it'd be good to, right?
That's right. Okay, Paul. Donnie, read this thing.
No, sir, he amended his resolution and he's not agreed to it.
Okay, all in favor?
Ah.
All right, let's go to.
We've got the, you've brought up the budget, over one with the two.
Now, we just got to pass a resolution, we're not going to vote before we end up meeting. Okay, L. Whereas the Department of Cleveland County Commission to pass a yearly budget for the upcoming fiscal year in September, maybe. Therefore, have to review and deliberate in the Cleveland County Commission hereby adopt the attached fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget version blank.
I think at this point in time, we need to have which one to table this for the.
I'd like a motion to table that resolution.
All right, everybody in favor of the real title?
Maybe for time.
You can do that again.
Okay.
All in favor?
Ah.
All right, M. Whereas the Cleveland County Sheriff is in risk in the purchase of a K-9 baby for products protection, whereas the Department of Labor requires the law enforcement agents to must compensate a K-9 handler for thirty minutes of overtime for the care of the K-9. Whereas the sheriff has stated the purchase of the K-9 and all of the related expenses will be paid by the sheriff from the Sheriff of Copeland. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to fund the overtime portion of K-9 expense by addition to the corporate place of mind.
How much motion?
Second.
Anything for discussion? All right, all in favor?
Ah.
O.
Yeah. Cybersecurity, M. Cybersecurity, isn't it?
Okay. Whereas the state and local cybersecurity grant program allows the Department of Homeland Security to make cybersecurity investments in overrunning. Whereas the Alamo Office of Information and Technology and the Cybersecurity Committee are developing a cybersecurity plan for the utilization of these grant funds. Whereas the Association of County Commissioners of Alamo must complete the survey on behalf of the members of the member counties to participate O I T and the committee to determine local needs. Whereas the county must complete a document to the eligible grant, including the S L C G P interest survey and the S L C G P local consent agreement. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves to allow its chairman, Ryan Austin, to execute these documents on behalf of the.
How much motion?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
All right, now with the O, and that's the last one, I have to say. Whereas represented from the Southern Farmhouse Company presented a possible project for Cleveland County. Whereas the purpose of the project is to honor the six individuals who are served honorably in one of the branches of armed services of the United States of America. Whereas the design and placement of the markers, which we placed along the streets and roads of the town of Randall, was exclaimed. Whereas S F C, which is responsible for construction, placement, and maintenance of these markers and the collection of benefits associated. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission supports Southern Farmhouse Company as a senior of the project known as the Veterans Memorial Market Park.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
All right, that leads us to the report from Stair. Joining the minister.
Okay, um, we have obviously been working pretty hard on budgets. Um, a couple of other things I did this month is I creeped up on the Senator Kent about the information that we need for the retired employees information. And we had our H R O get a report from our state to make sure those numbers were good numbers for us to use for that resolution. Um, I have had a team's meeting with the I N C, our, our ARPA, and L T C F projects. And basically, we're kind of grading how the counties are doing with keeping up with their paperwork and all their projects and how far along they are. And we got a high score on that, so we're in good shape. Um, there's, you know, a couple of things I've got to take down on just because we, that we're constantly in the process of bidding projects, so each time we get in the real stock, that's taken on that. Um, I have requested information from some of the local banks on interest rates and just kind of try and predict what we can do with our CDs that are becoming, that will be mature in January. Of course, you can't get any, any set number from that on that right now because they're not going to predict what's going to happen in January. But then the interest rates are up on, on many markets and now accounts. So that's something I'm still working on with them. I've reached back to several entities in Metro, and those, those numbers are definitely up to what they were last year. So it's possible that we'll need to make a decision about whether we want to leave our accounts as they are. And of course, even if the CDs end up being better, it won't make, it doesn't mean we have it all going back. So we'll make some decisions on that. Um, I will issue more information as it, as I receive it. Um, let's see. Uh, I kind of mentioned this to Mr. Hendricks just a few minutes ago, that, um, on our ARPA and L T C F money, um, when we were doing all the ARPA projects and dividing all the money, there was three hundred thousand that was put aside and sure, some projects that you all had in mind. Um, we went over that by twenty-four thousand dollars. And it's been suggested that they do take that out of the L T C F money. And I know those, those monies are all ARPA monies to a certain extent. Some of, some of the state money, the L T C F is actually state ARPA money. So, um, when I was talking to, uh, Phil Gillip and Perry Grashill with the I S, they about it. They suggested that we handle that maybe a different way. It's, it's not how it'd be done right this minute, but it's something to think about with, they didn't like the idea of moving the L T C F money into, to cover ARPA projects. Um, it's just leaves kind of a trail that makes it a little bit more difficult. Um, it's just leaves kind of a trail that makes it a little bit more difficult for the audit person to follow on our CBO, which is our federal audit part of our audit. So, um, that's just something to think about. But it's about twenty-four thousand dollars of what it would need to be taken out of, you know, with the money, or I figure out how we wanna do that. But as of right now, the amount of LTCF money that we divided up on that one resolution is the entire LTCF money. It did not take out the twenty-four thousand, so that's, that's where that lies right now. So just, just like I said, something to think about.
What, 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 what is the twenty-four thousand dollars used for?
It was, it was used in that, you know, I have that three hundred thousand piece of copy of mine. That I have everything.
On that first, the five hundred and three hundred thousand dollars, who we overspent.
We overspent a little bit on that.
And you and I said, just take it out of our portion, twelve each, and we can recoup it later.
Right.
And that was one because it's ARCA funds, but now it's, we're wanting to do it out of LTCF.
So I figured someone would write for me to recoup that twenty-four thousand. Okay.
And it was a tractor, it was, there were several things that was involved with it, with that one hundred thousand.
So you're gonna give that twenty thousand back?
Yeah, back.
You need to give that twenty thousand back?
Well, we gotta figure out how.
You just gotta figure out how.
This way we're working on it.
And it can be taken out of, yeah, it can be taken out of reserve. If you do it, how, how are the, like, the way it's all gonna come out washed, because I don't have a mind.
What else do you have? We talked about it, what was this?
Right, and I'm excited, just trying to kind of get you all right with it. I think that's pretty much it. I mean, other than our normal Councilman Carol in the month, transactions, agenda resolutions, uh, I think that's pretty much all the issues that I have this month.
Okay, question.
Okay.
So, uh, you got the, the button you sent out the other day, got all the changes that have been discussed tonight?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yours is?
Joyce's position is already in there because...
Okay.
It's a chair owner as a, as an engineer, so I've been going through.
Make sure everything that we thought about did not change in there.
We're all discussing what to have true.
Right.
If our county engineer has a different plan?
Um, we have, I hope we're on our last week with the county's, uh, several street projects. We, uh, I live on Ninety-One. We have some spots that have been, uh, in one of the last years. So we might get some repairs on it should we get fixed this week. And then we're gonna lose the library, uh, probably, first part of the year. We have the library like that, and that should be, um, for the county's, uh, street. The other projects that we have going, that's why the county transportation plans took, remained from last week. Top of the contractors on them, and I have harder dates for the house, for the month of the next that we're gonna get called in over the next couple of months. And so it should, it should be pushing that on, but it appears to be. The silo tractors are both back in, in working order. But one of the persons that was fixed is, is on the south end, that's where it started, or where it broke it. The other one, um, I'm going, I'm going halfway, but I guess I might put it on right now where everybody finishing up the dog trap while I'm on the ground. It is fixed, so hopefully we can make sure it's, it's back in the work.
Did you, uh, did they replace the whole arm? I mean, part of it just welled, it didn't, it didn't well, did it?
It was.
Okay.
And it was all, it was all, it was all new.
Okay, alright, good.
So, and it was actually...
So what do you think on those, I mean, we've talked about it, but I never would've thought that the arm had broken off.
Well, the arm that they replaced it with is, is already bigger and bigger. So it was a, it was a far side, there's some movements and...
And so they baked it out of it?
Yeah.
Because I, I seen it, so I meant, what I did the other day, it looks like it's still new, usually. Putting up a new brand job. After we get it.
Yeah, but yeah, so it's a big, it's a big, um, it's something they've baked on each other. Then the other thing that was wrong is the garage contract. We, we might have signed garage contracts here. Kind of, they got a hold of it with West Mansion, when we utilized a CBI, some of the price index that's close to the, uh, fuel surcharge that is in RFP. And I pretty much told them, I needed to answer yet today this week.
And you felt, Jason?
Whether or not they're gonna sign or not sign, so they, they're not gonna agree to the terms of the gap that we would have to do on that this week.
And basically, it's on them at this point. Fuel surcharge was in RFP, and they listed exceptions that we agreed and voted on their price numbers, but we never agreed to their exceptions. Uh, we sent them the contract that did not include the exceptions. They're wondering to stand on that, so basically they're being told, if you're rejecting the contract that's been tendered, they won't let you, that's your responsibility. Didn't make the same.
Well, we're talking too, and I know that the guy hasn't been busy yet. These, uh, Joyce, are you gonna keep your truck?
It's, they could, uh, you gotta link for it, is that what you're asking?
Well, well, we've, we've got the cleaning going back out, and we've got a couple applications, and I'm just wanting to, because they weren't to be able to move. The little truck would work better, but I was gonna ask Lee if he's got anything sitting around that they can drive from the warehouse back and forth around where they got all the truck.
My question would be this, in the event that one vehicle was out, when you had one for something, would it be available for us to?
Either that one or the black one.
Either that or another.
Or the black, the black issue.
Then yes, it's available.
What needs to be signed on, if they're back up and running, will they add to the old thing in the county?
No, it's going to the south.
Going to the east.
Actually, actually, I, I probably would do it to the, to District Three. We have not, we have not made a round in District Three in three years. And, um, I've got some areas over there that are really turning in safety measures, and I, I have to get them back. So once we, we'll blow through pretty quick, we'll get there.
District One.
In District, yeah. Because that's the direction that we're, essentially, I mean, the one on the south end sitting around Mike's bill right now, that's working, that's working all around. So I'm gonna just go to basically the center of the neighborhood and go to the board and say, this money, I'm looking at your district pretty quick. Um, but I, I believe I have something that I need to get back, because it's, it's, it's pretty, it's, it's...
You just might get started, I bet you.
Now, I knew it was gonna be in my district, so I might as well just pick another.
But it'll be back at there pretty quick.
I just got some bad spots. Uh, what about, are you still planning on giving the chipper out?
This one, as far as the damn trees and stuff?
Yes.
Yes, that's where we're gonna get that kind of chipper.
How many areas that you've got trees that are pretty close to the roadway? I mean, where you, instead of chipping them up like that, uh, if we had, or somebody would go by and grab the tree, put it in the trailer, and take it to the landfill and the lower end, because I thought we'd rob you with the city of heaven. If you would mark the spots and all you have to do is say, hey, here's a pin, and pin, pin spots. I'd just say it might be manpower to pull that chipper out, or renting chipper.
We, we wouldn't have time to do the chipper this winter, but that's all we've done all summer, is pile trees up on it. We'll just get them off the road, pile them against the edge with the tension coming back.
It's hard.
But he said, he said he still...
I'm late taking notes, I'm sorry.
My mistake. But it's fine, people should be pretty cheap, that's all I thought, yeah.
The silos can run all winter, right?
Silos can run all winter, and that's the issue.
It's called that.
That's probably good.
Anything else, buddy, on here? Anything else to it?
That's all, yeah.
Alright, Mr. County Attorney, did a good job bringing my...
The only thing I got is I have not heard from anybody with the Health Department on the sewer and septic issues, so...
I'll get that, we're close, she and I were guessing, separate issues.
I, I wanna talk to that, but I know we're gonna put it on straight on right now.
It's been, she's been, may have been missing from the office a couple times. We were guessing, probably, so I'm, I know she's...
That's all I have, for sure.
Any more questions? I got one, and I, I mean, this is, check to my head. We're back to the animal shelter. Do we have a BD that, how does that work?
It's on the city, and that's why we need to have the agreement. The city will have to follow all bid laws and all public works laws, and then identify the county and hold us harmless if they screw something up. That's why I wanna make sure the county...
So that agreement, I'm gonna take that out of all of it.
Correct.
Any more questions? Alright, we're gonna move into the budget portion. And I would assume we're gonna continue the meeting after we get through with the budget, or whatever everybody wants to do.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, and he goes, why don't you ask, but I might not wanna start the budget.
You don't wanna say for the budget.
The question that I asked could be asked, excuse me, I've got nothing to do yet. Started it, so.
I mean, y'all welcome to get up late each night. Uh, back to the internet. Hope people still never come back from the mess, but I reached out to, uh, to Chad. And Chad, I mean, he called, the same people I've been trying to call, they called him about five minutes. Okay, what he told me, and each one of y'all might have been talking to him, but he says the first two hundred million that they got, that nobody's gonna put in to bring it into Cleveland County because they don't think they'll get it. But the next two billion, I think it is, he says that they will, AT&amp;T and Centerland, not Centerland, by Wright's speed, and Point Broadband, never heard of them. But supposedly they're gonna put in a letter of intent. So I just wanted to keep y'all updated on that.
Did he not say that either one was gonna put in for the, for like a certain portion?
What he told me, when, when he and I was talking the other day, was he said Wright's speed, AT&amp;T, and Point Broadband. I mean, I guess, I mean, if we're not gonna put in for the first two hundred million, everybody, I guess, still got time, I don't know what the deadline is on that. Deadline on two hundred million is the sixteenth month over.
I think it's, he got his, that's, not that one.
And I talked to Chad. And I also talked to Randy Price and Chad.
You're right.
About this reported money that our governor is gonna turn it back into the federal government, and told both of them that Cleveland County sure a lot of have some of that money. And both of them shared the meaning that they're gonna see what they can do. So y'all would like to put some pressure on some people? Pick up the phone, call. Uh, because there's quite a bit of money there from a newspaper article, and that's all I think. Alright, let's take a break, and then we'll come back and work on the budget. And thank y'all for coming, and anybody who wants to leave, welcome to leave. If anybody wants to, if they ain't listened to the figures, welcome to.
Any more?
Okay. Working on the budget, and Adam has something he needs to say, so let's start on page seventeen for corner of the budget. And before we start, let me say one thing, because I got something else from your budget too. You didn't add a three percent raise in this, uh...
I didn't, yes? Well, that's what, that's what's set up, uh, didn't, didn't get to legislation yet, Dennis?
I don't know.
Uh, yeah, that's right, I did not add a percent, because of that.
No, I took it for, for a three percent raise, it's for a lack of business, so.
Not only, like, unfortunately, I'm not sure about this, that's why I didn't.
We'll find, find out.
Let's find out.
Okay.
That's exactly why I didn't know, because I...
That's not a whole lot of money to talk about, so we, we're arguing about representing a vehicle or something.
Representing nothing, I mean.
Uh, no, the only thing that I got, I noticed on the two-point-O version that came out the other day, I had put in a request for internet, and then I had put in a request for software. If y'all remember, I got that grant, uh, through the National Health Department issue. We got internet put in the board down there with that grant. And every, every report that I have to send to the Hoover Loud now has to be done via email. When I first started, I, there was a little printout that you could put in the box and send it, but all of that has to be emailed in now, so I really need that internet put in. And then that software program, I got the cheaper software program I can find, and it's actually pretty usual premium, but it's like two hundred dollars a year. And that allows me to take all of my cases, I enter them in, and I put a detailed description of the case of what's going on. When I get, send a body to Huntsville, if they have to have a detailed description, I just click a button, email that to them rather than having to fax them and, you know, give everything over to the phone.
I know, it was...
Internet is, I think, it's like eighty-five, Lisa, if you've got my original budget, I think somewhere around thirteen hundred dollars a year, eighty-five dollars a month, I think, for it.
You asked for an increase on line seven oh two five four, did you? Is that your internet?
I don't, well, if it's, I mean, I've never had internet before.
That was eight twenty, so you were asking for that.
And I have to, and I don't have any of that there, but...
On what line?
On seven oh two five four. And he probably doesn't have that line right now.
Yeah, I didn't have that line.
Because it's, it's a few lines, you know.
Yeah, that would've been two.
Two five four. Two five four?
That's because he never had that on before, but it is a...
The internet and the software would be two of those additional lineups that I haven't ran in the past.
This seven oh two four five is actually like software and that kind of thing, that would, he asked for a three hundred dollar increase on that.
Everybody agreed, and add that to the budget. Yes?
Maybe I have, I can't just say anything about it.
Yeah, but you gotta say, yeah, I can't just read my...
And you probably have one two fifty four, right?
She said seven, Tom.
It's like seven oh two five four, and he does not have that line on his, on his budget. It's on some of the others, it's internet, that's what that is.
Yeah, it's never been on my budget.
It's a thousand and twenty dollars.
So it's gonna be the next person?
I'll say then the next person, if you agree to ha, add that. And then three hundred, four, seven oh two three five, which is software, uh, I think, like, it's not called exactly.
So what's the total of the two numbers you need?
Thirteen twenty.
Thirteen hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thousand and twenty dollars.
Okay, I can, I can relate to that.
And then the only other issue that I had, so we're talk, talking about the vehicle going back to, I sat down with Lee, uh, we went and looked at some, I went up to his office the other day, we looked at some used vehicles on the piled-up surplus. They have a two thousand seventeen Ford Expedition four-by-four home Montgomery lot. I think it's like fourteen thousand dollars. But if we can get a good used vehicle, I'm, I'm good with that. If something is gonna look a better condition than what we got now.
What model?
It's a two thousand and seventeen, it's a model on that.
How many, uh?
Miles on it, like a hundred and forty, two thousand, I think, that's the only issue. Miles is looking closer to what the other one is, but...
Now, Lee said he was gonna go check it out, too.
Yeah, and you can, and Lee and I talked about the one down there, but I called the Montgomery surplus lot the other day, and y'all were supposed to be trying to find it, and called me back. I'm sure he got a decent amount of good chance to come in there today to find that, but I'll make that phone call tomorrow, again, see if it's on the lots, too.
What you want, Terry, what do you think about, if we find the vehicle, then come back?
Yeah, I was thinking that would have to come out of the budget, and I can just come back if one's found for the commission.
Yeah, that's, I mean, if we can come back and amend the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, so just come back and ask for amendment, if, but I am looking for something useful. We talked about Tahoe before, and I'm looking at the depth of the Tahoe with what I've gotta do for a car. I don't think that's gonna work, but if...
So how do you think, what you got now, you got an ambulance, you got a, is all of them running?
No, the ambulance is not running right now.
So, well, we're going with this, it might be some surplus that we might, you might make sale. You, you can come in with a request of surplus, and then that will go forward and buy another vehicle. So is the title true?
The Suburban is still running, yes, it's still running, which is having that old one, one of pretty regular vehicles.
So, so if you, if you purchase another one and surplus days, and that number would just come back into the commission?
Come back into, yeah.
Okay.
Good with me, but like I said, I am looking at, we're looking there, and I'll keep, but Lee and I keep checking on that website, see if there's anything that comes in.
So we're signing on the corner of the budget? Terry?
Uh, expedition is, is, I don't know.
Yes, yeah, expedition is, because you got enough room on it, it's just like the Suburban on the depth of the vehicle.
So it's standard?
Yeah, and that's, this one, this one looked to be standard, just like what the Suburban out there is.
Let's see what's in the budget, and we can always amend the budget.
Got it.
Alright, any questions for the corner? Alright?
Thank you, y'all have a good night.
Alright. Alright, uh, Sheriff, if you got anything, so we'll get you out of here.
Line will make that up, I have.
Okay, lines, we have...
But they got a sentence out last week?
What page is it?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, no, that's the sheriff, he'll be there.
To jail. They're physically close together. They're physically close together.
Fourteen or fifteen, fifteen or sixteen?
Yeah, it's fifteen.
Go ahead. Yeah, line one eight three, I would act a foul, unless I've got better bills, that's probably, it's actually, it's actually fifteen hundred a year.
That's how much you, six ten, what you have?
Hundred twenty-five a month, something like that.
So it needs to go back up to fifteen.
Sixteen twenty-five.
Well, that was an extra month, someone else got to get this, so it's fifteen hundred, so.
Got you.
And then one seventy, like I said, that email, kind of the shorthand we got, we just, come to the one crisis year, get that top on, make sure for the loan. And then, uh, to help get the whole guy. We've got a few of these, it's got over five years, everything else has got six months or less, or at least a year or less. And we've got to get them. Trains and so on, so they're starting to hone in the thing, the out of jail training academy, that's on line, I'm not sure much is going to cost, but it's a good thing.
So what do you want to change that to?
Just saying that we had.
Back to fifty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody alright on that?
Yes, sir.
And then the other, only other thing was line two sixteen, which that's where, that's just a catchall line for about everything we use in the jail. We've already spent.
Two sixteen.
Monterey towards supplies.
Yeah, we've already spent in the cupboard, right at sixteen thousand this year, so, you know, seventeen thousand is gonna be up out right this year, that might be, if nothing goes up.
Okay, so.
At least, at least maintain what we got this year.
Is everybody good with that?
Do you buy imports, was that how you get on to keep the cops out?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we got, same with this, and, and then, you know, the, I don't know, the departments know it, but clearly again, it's on the media department, which is a big purchasing group too, a lot of stuff can be bought cheaper, too.
So when I estimated that number, the reason I had fourteen thousand on it, is at the end of June, you'd only spent like ten thousand, two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So a lot of times, all I can do is break that out for the rest of the year, and that's, that's what I, what I did, it can.
Yeah, that's a hard estimation.
But, but your expenditures are not equal throughout the year, and I know that, there's one thing, so don't like that thing.
Whenever, whenever you, whenever you.
Did y'all not sit down and talk together before, did y'all not have a meeting before y'all, did you not meet with the department head?
We just, we didn't wait about it, but I, I took all the numbers, I took all the numbers and did the anticipated revenue expenses. And something you can, you can do really well by dividing it like that, or some things you know that you only, only pay for once a year, such as insurance, that's not that. But no, we did not sit down and read about it, we did okay, but we didn't, but they did fill that out and then we, we go with that.
But I think, I think, I think going forward, once you send out the budget and you get it back and you make a change on it, I think it needs to be a question for them, because, because a lot of that big guys and these ladies and gentlemen and all the people that does this, and that's been here longer than most of us. Uh, sometimes it'll catch stuff going the other way too, where if you accidentally put, you know, there's a number in there or something, you know, we caught one the other day where it was just way too high. And as a partner heads now, naturally it'll get caught sooner or later, but it's just, I think it's better that you, if you change something on this, it really needs to go back to them. So they can direct, look, go over it and, and just highlight what you changed and send it back to them, I don't, you know, I think that would be great for our department heads, because, uh, we don't want to not run out. Even at courthouse, we don't run out of toilet paper, we sure don't run out of that in jail.
I just think it's good, uh, for everybody, for you to meet with each one of the department heads, you know, in the future, to start meeting with them, to discuss with them. Maybe, you know, insight on, I think it's better that way, because, you know, being able to talk with always knowing what's going on in her department, same thing with the jail. The sheriff, the department heads, I think it's very quick that you meet with them face to face.
Especially if they got some big stuff at the end of the year, which usually they put it on there, they're real good about it, they've been doing it so long, that they're real good about putting on the budget, what they're anticipating, whether it's computers or, uh, the sheriff needs another car, the sheriff needs another car, the sheriff needs another car.
You can, you can look.
We didn't ask for it, just.
Well, they, they don't matter if you ask or not, we don't get them.
You can skip the bin numbers, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, I don't know how that's going to affect.
Alright, let's move on.
Okay.
Do you want to, you want to share yours, or?
I, I, I'm good with, with the budget, I don't think I have any questions, I just received it today, and so I've been looking over it, it looks in order. I should have a pretty good amount of money that will be rolled over into this budget, so I'm not really panicking about this one being a little higher than usual because of the, the roll over amounts there in the budget from this past.
Alright.
One other thing I was supposed to ask about, Paul would have asked about, was the carryover from last year, there was a few that hadn't been added back yet, and I know the sheriff probably won't leave.
Check on that.
Alright. The, with Joyce's budget, I got one question, are we almost starting from front and go through, or what?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the revenue didn't change, right, so we can go right to the bridge. Miss Lisa?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Where we going?
Starting first.
Okay.
Just got a little start on page seven. And I've done looked through it and marked my questions, but everybody speak up if there's anything, or, or they got a question.
Where are we at as far as, other than what I think the little thing we got left is, I, I, I guess, you want to answer a question first, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
Where, where are we at with the budget right now, with what you participated, we bring in and where our budget is? Are we gonna be under budget, if we are today?
Under budget, like on this case?
So we're gonna, we're gonna spend out what we're taking in, correct?
Right.
So, are, where are we at? What do you think?
Are you talking about for F I twenty-three?
Yeah.
So far? Well, have to look at A and E reports, really, I mean, to get a, a completely accurate number, right now, all the departments are, have not spent on their budget.
Right.
But as far as, you know, that, that's constantly changing. And I don't have the, the, um, A and Es done yet for, um, for this past month, I should have those probably tomorrow. I've got a couple of line item revisions to do, and a few journal entries, and then I'll have those ready. So that will get you all the way through to the end of August, so you'll know pretty much what's left over for the last month of the year. Um, of course, as soon as department heads get those, those A and E reports and say they've got extra money left on a line, they'll, they'll spend it. I mean, that's what they do.
I, I disagree there, I, I do not think, because I, I feel like that there, I know some of these, they say they've really tried to keep their budget, because they know that we're walking some thin lines.
Well, the.
I know they're not trying to go over, they're not trying to go over, I'm just saying that if they see they've got four hundred dollars left in their office supply, they're like, well, I'd be willing to buy more paper because I'm getting low.
Right.
You know, instead of waiting till.
And that, and that's sort of the way we do too, mostly toilet paper and something in the little budgets that I've got, but I think too, I, uh, the sheriff's budget, what he carries over, carries over anyway, so that's not gonna help us as far as, so then you got Joyce's office, her budget is a good budget, but, uh, it's always pretty close to the dollar, because hers is, is tucked out on the front end. So.
And I read it seemed like they're trying to overspend, I was saying that, you know, like us, I'll make my budget, and I said that we've got extra money in our office supply, and so, Chris, go ahead and buy more paper, because we're gonna run out in a couple of months, we're just looking to get it.
We, we, we're not, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm saying, I think, I think you're right, because, because then you didn't know, because that's what we usually do too, if we need to get the lawnmowers repaired or whatever, or we need to buy a weed eater. Uh, but, but which departments are you looking at, other than your own or nine one one, that would be a carryover, carryover nine one one stays for nine one one. So you're only talking about this building, you're talking about maintenance budget, sheriff's budget carries over. So you ain't got many budgets out there, if you gotta say, hey, this is what's gonna be a carryover for the year, correct? But because money stays in his budget, money stays in her budget, not Joyce's budget, she usually, usually pretty close on your budget every year, right?
I usually have carryovers.
So there's Ryan's budget that could be a carryover, I'm just trying to figure out what we got that, you know, what we, could be looking for.
I'd be surprised if everybody didn't have a look at a carryover.
Yeah.
They usually do, but I don't usually see any, any department completely blowing out their budget.
And, and I agree with folks, I would use whatever y'all approve by the carryover that she.
Okay, that's the way it works?
Yes, and if you notice, a lot of those lines are so out on the A and E report, they're gonna have to get the money from somewhere in their budget to offset those.
Someone will really.
And then if you look at the bottom number, the lecture will tell you when it's over, the very bottom number on that page will tell you. As even myself, I like that lines that are over on line, because things I couldn't anticipate, and part of that's been a fairly new department head and not knowing that we, what we would expect to come for federal audit. Now, one of the interesting things that I found out when I was talking to the I A C, is that they said that, um, a lot of counties were counting their federal audit as part of their monies that they spent on the ARCA fund, because they knew that would be the year that they would have to have a, a federal audit. They actually had a lot of, like on this spreadsheet, which was a standard sheet, they were using for others, they had sixty thousand for three years of audits.
Can I do that?
You, you can use some of that money for, for audits, we just did not plan it that way, no one ever mentioned like.
That's why I'm saying, they're gonna do that.
I mean, and, but of course now, all that we have left of the ARCA funds is what's left in the P C F, and you guys just might let up. But if you wanted to use some of that money for audit, you can, but now I don't.
I'll use it for whatever I guess the budget.
I don't think that, I don't think that, um, our, um, federal audit's been costing as much this time, because they streamlined that into a lower level audit for those that are just having to do the federal audit because of ARCA funds, that's not supposed to be nearly as expensive this year, and last year it was sixteen thousand, so I mean, it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't crazy money, it's just.
Terry, within, within fifty thousand dollars, without carryover, would that, that's, we're gonna be within budget?
Well, we haven't established the budget yet, so we need to go through, establish that number.
It's too many, yeah, to, to figure that out right now.
When we, when we approve the budget, then that's when she can tell us, are we within, or we're not, then we have to go out and trim some more if we have to. But we need to do this first, because we don't need two hypothetical line, uh, numbers, just one hypothetical number.
Hey, Terry, are you looking at two thirty-five on my line budget? Because I think that one needs to be changed back to the twenty twenty-three number.
I, I don't know, I've done swap back to the front.
Okay, I didn't know, you said you had one question.
I, I think the question I had on that was on the insurance line, it jumped up some, but.
Oh, I'm not in charge of that, I'm sorry.
Which line on that, Terry?
Okay, we're on page seven, account administrator's budget.
Okay, here we go.
Does anybody wanna amend anything that we, from last week?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I have kind of, it is just been a timing issue, but we're going to be shorthanded for several weeks here in our office, and I just don't know. I mean, it's all we can do to get everything done right now. Um, I'm anticipating, I mean, it's probab- probably only gonna be, I think we need a temp, a part-time temp for about two weeks before she gets out. And she says she's only gonna be out for two weeks, I really think it's gonna take a little longer than that. So the worst case scenario, I figure her total paid weeks at fifteen to twenty hours a week would cost about three thousand dollars.
Okay, can I ask you something about that, have you got any money in here for Melissa this year?
I do, it's in the, it's in the audit.
Okay, okay, so, uh.
Why do, we still have money in that for Melissa?
Yeah, you have any?
Just that she tells the line, financials.
But, yeah, that's on line one sixty-four. Can you, can you not use some of that money for a temp?
I would, I would like that, yeah, we would use it, I would like it, I would like it.
Could you use some money out of that, then at some point?
Okay, could we like?
We could amend it.
Yes, if, if, as long as you're aware of it, and it may be, I just don't see, um, you know, with my finance working out for that long, that we're not gonna, I'm gonna need somebody in here. She, she's been cross trained for a good bit, and it, it's just that she can't do all the things that she normally does and expected to do, to pick up all the extra things.
Are you gonna need somebody to come in a week before, or to sit down before she hit?
Two weeks, two weeks before.
Well, we just pulled out of that one, and Melissa has to come in and, she does.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, sir, no.
That's all on line.
Okay, so is everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, move on to page eight, I don't have anything on that, did anybody get anything?
No.
Okay, move on to page nine, does anybody have anything on that?
None, I'm sure.
Alright, move on to Tina. Um, Tina, I have a question about the health insurance.
Oh, it's not one of the questions that I answered with the, the email.
Okay, then.
Trying to.
And then I can get that email or I can read it.
When I sent out the budget, and I sent out everything that just had asked me to change, and that might not have been one of those. But I will say this, I went back through all of the, all of the department's budgets and checked their health insurance and their, um, flex to make sure all those were correct, I got them all round to go through it, and then I went back through it again. So those numbers should be good now, health insurance and flex.
We have questions on a couple of them.
Yeah.
Well, they should have big turnover, right, well, I mean, most of those are pretty.
So we called one, and I don't remember which one it was, we called one when we were in budget main last time, got caught another one, we went back through it, so.
I mean, just what I was looking at is between the plates and insurance, looking at about four thousand dollars different, that's, so that's how I'm about right?
Every department's different, every single one of them are different, it just depends on how many people you have in your departments.
For flex and having.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does anybody got anything on the pro judges office? Since Ryan is here, we can slash them half, if y'all good with that.
Who's telling?
I don't know, I can't. One thing I did do is I did divide the courthouse deputy, I divided it, um, I went fifty percent in sheriff's departments, that's still technically that department. I put twenty-five percent on Joyce's budget and twenty-five percent on for big judge, it seemed like a, a.
Is that salary and health insurance, gas and everything?
I'm about gasoline, I mean, all the, all the salary items, it's not everybody that.
Alright, anybody else got any questions?
No.
Okay, moving on to the layups, does anybody have a problem with the layups?
No.
You guys speak up now.
Where's Baker?
You got a problem?
No.
No, I was trying to make sure that he does have, you know, because this is correct, and the, the light changes, he does have a problem here.
He, that question was brought up last week, he said. Okay, move on to the way up, border register, first county attorney, anybody got a problem?
No.
Okay, thirteen, maintenance of county buildings, anybody got a problem with that?
Uh, please. I was just, actually, one of the things that it is, is, uh, I guess, to talk about, uh, the wiring, I was, when I walked through the courthouse showing Roger the wiring, we were talking about what's hanging all over the place in there. Uh, the only thing I said is in this budget, if we're gonna discuss it, it might be too late, we might need to look at it next year, and maybe take time to really do a study, and maybe look at a grant. But that is a good thing that Fred come up with, to look at replacing the wiring, you know, the, all the wires, it's just a mess, and, uh.
That was on five thirty, you didn't.
That would be five forty, oh yeah, five thirty, yeah.
We already took it down, didn't we?
Yeah, well, I just, I just wanted to bring it up again, so Roger would know that it's not in there.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Alright, move on, sheriff's office, sheriff said he was happy with his budget, or y'all happy with it?
I'm happy with it.
I don't, uh, I don't think, yeah, we changed, what we changed last week, I don't see anything.
Now, who do you, who do you make with, Lainey, is that you that saw the sheriff's budget too, or you're, the sheriff's budget in there, or the Ryan?
I think it's like, all he was doing was laughing.
I think it was like, all of yours does the last.
So you've got, Holland, I mean, it's good to go.
I got to the sheriff's.
He said it's good, I don't.
Apparently Holland, he said he was good. Okay, we've already made the changes to the jails that Lani needed. Okay, on the E M A, page sixteen, um, I had a question on two thirty-one. How come we jumped that up so much? Repair and maintenance on buildings and land, is that?
There was a specific thing that she had replaced that owes, was that not there?
I'm talking about the sewage, dude.
There was a.
Well, it might have got jumped, I mean, the search deal is done and done and now, I mean, we're still having to pump it out, but.
Maybe it might not be.
You wouldn't wanna put it thirty-five hundred, say, I don't know what she's got it for, I don't know what she's increased her base for, it might be for six million. Says.
She would, she would, why she wanted to get it increased? Well, she replaced it though, but she didn't increase it, so was there a reason he requested?
There was a reason that was increased, a specific reason, that exact dollar amount is.
I mean, it's, it's not that generated a profit to him, it's because we already passed a resolution last year for that, didn't we?
Yeah.
It was a.
But that comes, that comes in.
It is about to be, you know, keep off it.
Keep off.
It is gotta be off.
Yeah.
And that's divided amongst the departments in here, it's keep off.
So what's the thirty-five hundred for then?
Thirty-five hundred is just for the normal things like the pumping of the.
What's her A and E report show for now, I'm looking on that line, I guess I said that wrong.
Cause she got, boy, she got two dollars, she got a maintenance, and I'll do, that's part of that on the magnitude.
Okay. So it's not, yeah, okay.
Cause that building up on her debt and that's how, she's got a maintenance hitting, I think there's another one somewhere in there.
This year she's getting a little bit out.
Do we want to get some clarification on that, is everybody good?
I'm good. Corner, we got it signed off, we'll move on with number eighteen. I guess we approved the transportation bus.
The juvenile probation officer, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Transportation, general fund, sole conservation, landfill maintenance, everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I mean, we'd be able to change, we talked about, you did have the thirty-three, that's set tires, married thousands. All right, uh, tax, tobacco tax fund, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Any good ones? All right, everybody up?
Yeah.
All right, library.
Good.
Uh, extension services.
Good.
Uh, county administration gasoline funds, that's our, our salaries and I think part of the lease is salary, am I getting that right?
Yes, you should be down.
That's good.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I like to sort of look in the future, as things get better, just start swigging that back up. A lot of counties don't do that anymore, so. I mean, it's almost like we're just changing hands, you know, we're giving them this money over here, we just let them have the money here, but I'm just saying, it just don't look kind of good.
Make a note of that, we'll talk about it sometime next year.
Okay.
Uh.
I didn't talk about it before then. County engineers office, that's a good cutter right there, we'll get some cut on that.
All the ways has been changed.
You got that one, sixty-four.
Everybody good?
Yeah, good.
Okay, the highway traffic fund, government capital improvement fund, gasoline tax, secondary road fund, anything?
Good.
It's making money of that. Yeah, it's not like we're gonna really change part of that, anyway, that's, uh, property appraisal and mapping. I don't have nothing.
All right.
Everybody good?
Good.
And Joyce's position, I have that, so you won't see that in that top line, that one salary.
Six thousand.
And you, the frequent raises across the board, you already got all right in there. All right, we already talked about the health insurance deal there, or even.
Get that score on that, okay.
More than double, is that right? All right, the revenue ministers office salary, all good?
All good.
Forestry.
Good.
County engineers, rebuild Alabama Act, extension office.
Good.
Uh, warrants, debt, okay, on the, on the repayment of the debt.
The debt. Mm-hmm.
Uh, we only gotta pay six payments, don't we?
No, it ends with G.
Gym.
Okay, so we got.
Yeah, sure.
I got nowhere to do some, okay. Okay, I gotta throw it off on that.
Okay.
Um, on nine one one, the building on two thirty-one, she wanted twelve and we're giving her three, is that correct?
Yes.
Cause she also gets part of that, I mean, we're talking about the fob, that fob must be a lot of money, thirteen thousand.
I don't understand that, can you just give everybody a key, you cost too low?
But, but with that fob, when, when they're back there at nine, nine one one, it's really mostly more for them to be slaves because they have to let bring people in, they can't get up and leave sometimes to let somebody in, you know, when they're going to get lunch and it's, it's a lot of money, but it's well worth it.
Okay, everybody's good?
They can walk up to you.
So, talk about security, so y'all still got the push button, it's monitored for the.
As far as we know, it's monitored, we haven't had a situation where we had to mash the button and it's.
Is that getting tested or anything?
Well, it was, it was tested back when, I, I think it was Joe Bailey came and inserted the, the, the new camera system and everything, it was tested then and it worked. Um, we don't test that thing, like I said, because the last time we did the testing, it was an accidental testing.
So, 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 so let me ask you this, I just, so if you ever talk about this, right? Uh, well, make sure you know. So what I'm asking is, with our new deputy that's there on site.
Yeah, do we have to have it?
No, I, I don't mind still having it, but is she aware of, and what is her program? If you have, we still have emergency in the courthouse and she can't be up and, and you're upstairs, you know, she's mostly downstairs, that's where she's at, the front door, but what is the protocol now since we do have a deputy there?
So that, you all know that the county courthouse is actually the, the responsibility of the sheriff's department, however, originally when we, we put that little panic button in, the city of Heflin Police Department were the first to respond to that.
Well, yeah.
Well, it was, I think that that's how nine one one probably sent them out, when the panic, panic button goes across the table. Yeah, because it's in the city limits of Heflin. So I don't know if that's something that we need to have a one, one time a year, you know.
I think, that's what I, what I wanted, that's what was on my mind, because I've been looking at that panic button.
Yeah.
But I've just, if we're gonna pay for it.
Sure.
I wanna make sure it's working and number two, which I know it's not true, maybe me and Lisa and Roger, so it's something we just need to make sure that we, cause I wanna know what her position is if something happens, cause she really can't leave her post as much as you think she can.
And you know, and I don't, I don't mind at all that y'all put the part of her salary on mine, but have we looked at if part of her salary should be coming from the, the judges upstairs as well?
I don't know.
Is that something that they would be?
Those judges, those are state employees and so they don't even have any salary lines.
Okay.
So that's kind of why I did it that way.
So they don't have a budget, so, right, okay. I didn't know what the clerk did, the circuit clerk, and, yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, circuit clerk, we can take it, but you know, they do all, they collect all that money for, we're gonna give them a penny for that, so.
I understand.
Yeah. Okay, well, I will, we will figure that one out, right?
I have one more thing that I kind of, kind of referred to me, if we're going to do, and I know we are because we brought past a resolution for, the fourteen thousand dollars for the retirees, which that is not in our budget for next year and it will be paid out, I wanna understand, they have to have the resolution and everything by October to think the checks out, be sent out in December, so that is not in there. I did reduce our appropriations line for, for admin by ten thousand dollars because you've already earmarked ten thousand dollars with your discretionary notes, it's all this started, um, for the sound system and the community center items, so I reduced it by ten, and do we want to put the ten back in there to cover for these, this one time bonus for these retired employees?
Yeah, we might put the money in there, boy.
It is not in there.
Is, is it something we can take out of one department or does every department need the sheriff in it, or?
I think we can put in appropriations and then just kind of come out of the bill budget, because it is not, it is not directly like a county service at this point, it can be like an appropriation.
Okay.
Like your discretionary notes that come out of appropriation. We just gotta take a three step. So just increase that, that appropriations line by fourteen thousand, became some like, okay, I just wanna, we want us to forget that.
Page five or something.
So, we're in page twenty-seven, right?
We'll, we'll go back.
Let's go back and do this, so we have the final words and everybody go back and check it out.
Well, she gives us the two.
Let's have, let's have force front, administrators.
It's in the page seven.
Okay, so appropriations, you wanna change that, like three fourteen, so it's a three twenty-eight?
So we're.
It's, I'll add the, I'll add all of it, it's fourteen thousand, where that.
So the other money that passed the resolution period off, would be added to that number, right? The sixty-seven thousand something that was divided amongst four commissioners, would we add it to that? You don't add it?
No, that's hard, that's hard.
That's only a two C F money.
But it would be added, right?
We're not, we're not, we're not gonna do that very well, this is separate. Separate all together, it's fourteen thousand, I want to say it was about ninety-one.
Okay, but you gonna add it on.
Yeah, fourteen thousand.
Seven hundred.
Fourteen thousand ninety-four dollars, which will be added to it. Back to that, back to that line, that.
Fourteen thousand.
Appropriations. Ninety-four.
Ninety-four, plus three one four, five six one, five six. So you're looking at three twenty-eight, six fifty-five, sixty, does that sound good? You gonna go ahead and check my math?
I am. You would want me to, wouldn't you?
I'd be just going, you didn't?
That's right.
Oh, we didn't, um, we should have congratulated you on your rating on that ARCA bill too. Uh, congratulations, we appreciate it. Okay. Back to nine one one, um, I got a question on nine one one. Okay, if we, whatever happens with the city of Heflin, are we gonna just reduce the budget or we're gonna pay the difference out of the general fund?
She says she's gotta have that money.
Yeah, she, she's already said it, there's no way she can take that.
Right, so we, we either got, we're gonna make it whole, we gotta figure out how much money we can get.
Okay, I mean, that was just my question?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Maintain her employees, she's got to have that.
Right.
We'll go back to.
Okay, on lines two thirty-six, she has the twenty fours, we got a forty four on there, they, uh, regret by maybe, we're gonna mind you there.
She has got specific contracts that add to that, um, she talked about it, I can find them up here again now.
Are those contracts, are they divided up?
They are so, that all would come out now, it's for the twenty four, but some of them will fall in there twenty-five, is that how crazy? She has, um, no, it's, she's got it specifically how much to come out for this year, that's why it's gonna be added on there like that, um, she has.
We need to, I was talking about this last week, we need to look at hiring a computer person.
Yeah, we talked about.
We're paying a quarter million dollars a year for maintenance on computers and hey, we can hire somebody to do that. We need to look at that in the future.
The, the reason that it's increased is twenty-one thousand five hundred seventy-five, um, dollars, that is a recorded update, um, and then there's some items that are split twenty-two, thirty-five, twenty-thirty-six, and then several others, Ryan, public safety, Geo Connects and Alcom, that's contracts that she has that she has to pay each year. So, um, I do know that she had, she had kind of delved into, you know, what it would cost to, she's, she's trying to get all the different departments to tell her what contract she has and how much those contracts are costing, so she can see exactly what, we might could hire an in-house I T person that would work at all areas, we can have an office here and then work all over. It's probably be the same.
Thousand, is that a sale, I mean, cause that's nearly double.
Well, what we're doing there is we're adding the twenty-three together, we're putting the twenty-four together, when it comes out, it's actually the same thing, but it's.
It's actually what she requested, taking this as.
She requested twenty-four, five, seventy-five, and last year's budget, she got twenty thousand, but if you add them together, it's forty-four, five, seventy-five, that's what we got figured on that line, which is out on her thing.
Yeah, Melissa skipped through the twenty-four, five, seventy-five, I think it's something deeper than she was, but how many, it's lying to us.
Man, I can't remember if she said anything last week about anything out of order.
I guarantee she will know what that hundred is gonna be called.
Yes, she can call. She will know what it's gonna be.
It's on.
There was a reason, I worry.
I mean, there might have been a reason, I'm sixty-five years old and we're two and a half hours into this meeting.
It's not, I'm doing it, I'm moving my hair all the.
It's line two, two thirty-six. Like I said, I've got that list of things that she pays out of that line.
Well, I just rather have, they, they aren't required now, they need equipment out there and all that stuff.
But.
It's, it's so weird if you add them together, that's what it comes up to. Usually stuff like that doesn't work out like that.
If you add one, uh, uh, line, it was two thirty-five and two thirty-six together, that comes up to be about fifty-nine thousand, and so that's very roughly what she's got listed out, um, a little bit less than that, but just twenty-four, five, seventy-five just for the recorded date, and then she's got another twenty-two thousand or something like that.
I remember hearing some of those, I was working here.
I, I'm.
Crystal.
Two.
Yeah, I know that. You just, this is, mine's not working. Your work, yes. Mr. Ringman.
Twelve.
Hello?
Hey, you're on speakerphone, it's Commissioner Lee, now that we just have a question for you, can you get a minute?
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
On my line on two thirty-six, requires maintenance communication equipment, uh, there's twenty, then there's twenty-four, seven, five, seventy-five, uh, and then it's four, forty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-five, can you live with the twenty-four or you need the other twenty that's added in there?
The other twenty that's added to it is the, um, the recorder that we have to have upgraded this year. So, device that don't run, running out, they did software on it, um, and that's the one that I did apply for a state grant for, so I'm gonna get that.
That's what she said. Okay, thanks.
Yep, is that it? Perfect.
I think she looked like, says she'll pop up, right?
We might get around, but.
So why would we?
Well, you're gonna put it in there or you don't?
And then if she doesn't, then we'll increase it because.
So maybe that, that's twenty, then, take it back, twenty's what I'm saying?
Or five, six.
Twenty-four, five, seventy-five.
And then if she doesn't, then she can come back to us.
We're gonna need it.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that? Everybody good? That's the last page. Anybody got anything else?
Change or something, you got some part of the copy, listen.
Okay, and.
I, I need.
And the A, A and E reports will be ready tomorrow, correct? They should, I should be able to get them tomorrow, I always will, but, um, we've got AP day, as you know, the sun shakes today, I'm going to get AP transfers done in the morning. I don't see the reason why I shouldn't be able to.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue until next P P on the budget. Second?
All right.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, two and a half minutes. All right, so anybody have anything to say now, it's time to say it, or anybody for you to get to it, fine?
And we might be closer on the displaced area, because I just, what I was sort of looking at for is what was the displaced areas on my sheets? That, so if we don't, we probably should just put it blank instead of thinking we got it.
Can, can you just do us a simple sheet with what you anticipate? And what we've actually set aside here, and see if it.
Yeah, I was not, I was still making, I was sorry, I was just. No, and I'm just, I asked the, the last one, which you didn't mind, and I hope you know that I still do my case. But also, it can be benefited having eleven months for the data, after, a day, or four, I don't know, eleven months for the data, so that actually helps. Um, when you're based in all nine months, this is a little different. And like, they're not paying you that well, I think, or six, I think.
One thousand more than.
Okay, so I'm going to be the lady to herself, okay?
That's what I said, it's on my, that's what my.
Really, really good, you guys are going to be super great. Anything else?
It ain't cheap.
Anybody got anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.